Calling to order the Board of Education meeting for Sacramento Unified School District. We're going to start off today with 4.1, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, please stand.
And so, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and now we have, welcome Adam 4.2, welcome new student board member. Where's our new student board member? Oh, also, can you, if you guys can hear, can you guys hear me well? Okay, also for audience members who speak Spanish that are here in attendance today, we have translation in the back, so if you need any help with translation, we have that in the back right there, so you can get something to audio, listen to the meeting as well in your native language, so thank you so much for that. And now we have new student board member, and is our new student board member here today? Oh, there, hey, 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 sorry about that. So, we have Gracie, that's what you have to be called, Gracie, has been a student with SUSD for all of K through 12 grade levels. They've worked as a member of the Sacramento Advisory Council since June of 2022 alongside her role as SAC, she is Vice Chair of the Sacramento Youth Commission. That's where I've seen you from, there you go. She has made efforts to advocate for youth voice throughout both the district and the city. Gracie upholds the values that that decision should be made without including the voices of impact, who are impacted by them, I'm sorry, decisions shouldn't be made without including the voices that are impacted by them. They want to ensure that the perspectives of students are fairly represented and listened to. She believes that in order to change, for change to be made, youth voices need to be respected in the conversation, in the conversation. So, without further ado, Gracie, could you join us up here? All right. And. Thank you. So do you have anything you have to say to the audience?
Uh, yeah.
Right there.
I'm really excited for this year, and I thank you all for welcoming me onto the board. I think that it's going to be a really fun experience, and I'm super ready to get started.
Beautiful, another round of applause for Gracie. Any board comments? We have, Gracie.
Two Gracys are better than one.
Any word, okay, um, next, we're going to go to the broadcast statement from our student member.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Sunday, August 20th at 6:00 PM and Monday, August 21st at 12:00 PM. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which are located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your agenda item has come up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silence mode.
Thank you so much. Going into item 5.0, announcements of actions taken in closed session.
President Rhodes, we have one announcement coming out of closed session, and that will be made by Acting Superintendent Allen.
Thank you, Dulcinea. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointment. By a vote of four to zero, with the board members Pritchett, Member Singh, and Member Phillips absent, the board approved the appointment of Janay Marking for our Chief Business and Operations Officer.
Thank you Superintendent Allen. Now we're going to go to item 6.0, agenda adoption. Before we move to adopt this agenda, before we adopt this tonight, I would like to remove two items from item 11, consent agenda, as these two items will not be considered tonight at all and will be brought forward to a future meeting. Those items are the contracts with Care Solus, which is the first item on 11.1A, and the second is 11.1K, a contract for independent monitoring. With these changes to the agenda, I had, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Move second, okay, all, do we need a little call vote for this one? We do, huh? Superintendent.
Thank you, Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Caillada.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett's not here, Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Okay, preferential.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, we're going to go to item 7.0, public comment. How many public comments do we have today?
We have almost 40.
Okay, 40, okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to do one minute for each public comment, so we can hear everybody and still be able to conduct the business today. So, moving on to one minute, do we have? Bless you, bless you, salut. That's a motion? Okay, so, do we, do we have a, I'll motion it, do we have a second? Second, all in favor? Okay, thank you, one minute for each speaker, thank you very much.
Okay, first speaker is Anna Malander, followed by Reshan Barmarand and Valerie Williams Crawford.
Hello, Anna.
Anna Malander Herman. And Parents Unit, and I'm here tonight to talk about a very important issue that's come up. It started to come up last spring, and we raised it with some of you regarding open enrollment and the way that permits, intra-district permits and class splits are happening in the district. This is your policy, this is your open enrollment policy, and the way it's being implemented is hurting kids, it's hurting kids and it's hurting families. Two weeks from today, we're going to have approximately 1,500 kids come home that night and say that they are in a split class. At spring last year, when I did a PRA, we found out that there are 50 split classes across the district, that is far too many. Split classes don't serve our children well. We can level classes later, we need to put teachers in classrooms and make sure that every kid gets a class that's not a split class. We need to do it in February or March, so that we have plenty of time to hire instead of, instead of worrying about hiring 20 days into the school year. And other points, you need a mural out front of the Surna Center that all needs to be painted, it looks terrible, thanks.
Good evening, my name is Rashad Bahraman, and I work with, as a volunteer with a nonprofit agency that mainly help us and assist, and you are Afghan, arrived Afghan in Sacramento County. As a former Assistant Probation Officer with Sacramento County for 13 years, I worked with thousands of juvenile kids, and unfortunately, we are facing the same dilemma with Afghan youths, and they're facing bullying as far as anxiety, stress, and basically, they're actually talking about forming gangs and the stuff to just prevent the stuff. So, basically, I'm here to support the Miracle University to, as a solution, to assist these kids, and we will definitely support them as an organization to assist Afghan youths to basically graduate from high school and for mentoring, thank you, thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Valerie, Valerie Williams Crawford, I represent the PAS organization. And I came up because I'm not sure if anyone else noticed, if you live in Sacramento, we have an increase in our sideshows and reckless driving, and so I just wanted to bring a little bit more awareness to the fact that we have workers and parents that are willing to be out here covering our streets, before school, after school, during lunch, for our kids to be safe out here while people are driving their cars recklessly. It's increased so much over the summer that I have to bring a special point, to the point where I'm sending letters to our principals, so that they can get it out to the parents, so that they can stay with their kids, because the kid, they're just driving too reckless. And then our games also, we need that additional presence to keep our kids safe. It's hard enough being in the schools with the bullying going on and all the other things going on, the cars now are an issue really bad on our streets before and after school. Thank you so much, everyone, welcome Gracie.
Thank you.
Next group of speakers, Martha Pulido, followed by Nora Baraza, then Alma Garcia, and Lucero Soto.
Welcome. Back.
Hi, good evening, my name is Martha Pulido, I actually am a parent of two children attending the new community schools, Edward Kimball and Zara Chavez, and I'm also a SAC past parent and a SAC Act volunteer. The reason why I'm here today is because since our schools are new community schools, we wanted to be a part of the community schools, how to implement it in our schools. I know that there's going to be two, the two phases where parents can be involved, so we wanted to be actual parents, not also impaired employees, so we wanted to be parents to, for us to be part of that, that process. When we were looking into the process of hiring the principals for our new two schools, the parents that were selected were also SAC employees, so we felt like it wasn't real representation of just parents, so, and thankfully, I was part of the hiring process for Edward Kimball, but I feel like, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Buenas noches, soy Alma Garcia, yo estoy en el programa PAS y tengo tres hijos.
Good night, my name is Alma Garcia, and I'm in the PAS program, I have three kids.
Mis hijos estudian en la McClatchy High School y en la California Middle School.
My kids study in McClatchy High School and in California Middle School.
Primeramente gracias por la oportunidad de expresarnos y por su gran esfuerzo.
First of all, thank you to the board for letting us express ourselves and for your hard work.
Como madre latina, deseo que nuestros hijos triunfen y contribuyan a la comunidad.
As a Latina mother, I desire that my kids do good and contribute to the community.
Sin embargo, muchos padres como yo, al no ser bilingües, tenemos obstáculos y problemas para participar plenamente en la educación de nuestros hijos.
However, many fathers and mothers as myself, we are not bilingual, and we have obstacles and problems to participate fully in the education of our kids.
Por el tiempo solo mencionaría tres.
I will mention three problems.
Número uno, no existe o hay muy poca traducción para comunicarnos en el staff de la escuela y con los maestros.
First of all, there's very little or non-existent service of interpretation to communicate ourselves with the staff at the school and with the teachers.
Número dos, generalmente las personas encargadas de traducir tienen múltiples funciones y no están siempre disponibles para nosotros.
Number two, generally the person in charge of the interpretations at the school has many other functions and is not always available for us.
Nuestros niños se ven obligados a enfrentar solo las diferentes situaciones en la escuela, aún cuando no tienen suficiente madurez para hacerlo.
And third, consequently, our kids are obligated to, to be by themselves, facing situations in the school, although they still don't have the enough maturity to do so.
Sería magnífico tener suficiente personal capacitado para traducir y usar la tecnología y ayudar a nuestros hijos.
It would be great to have enough personnel to be able to interpret and use the technology disposable in the system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Buenas tardes a todos, y muchas gracias a todos los papás que están aquí.
Good evening to everyone and thank you to all the parents that are here.
Mi nombre es Nora Baraza, tengo estudiantes en la escuela Luther Burbank, hoy estoy aquí simplemente para que nos apoyen con más seguridad en el campo dentro de las escuelas.
My name is Nora Baraza, I have children at Luther Burbank, and I am here to express the safety that needs to be addressed in our schools.
Y que nos apoyen también con el problema de las drogas, el bullying, y aparte el problema que tienen ahorita nuestros estudiantes con la salud mental.
We need support with drugs, bullying, and our students are saying they need more mental health support.
Y que los maestros apoyen más a nuestros niños cuando los miran así como pensativos o tristes y no les, no sean como irrespetuosos con ellos.
Staff working with our students need to pay attention more to students when they're thinking a lot or when they're not really involved, and not be disrespectful about it.
Y que nosotros como comunidad latina o todas nuestras razas ocupamos otro, otra una traducción, so, para senternos un poquito mejor en nuestro idioma.
Our Latin community and just our diverse community in general need language access to be able to express themselves.
En te mano muchas gracias y espero verlos pronto.
Thank you very much, and I hope to see you soon.
Next speaker? Oh, hello again.
Hello again, not translating this time. Good evening, Board, my name is Lucero Soto, community organizer with Sacramento Act. I'm just here today looking forward to this new year, engaging our parents authentically, and I would like to share with you a testimony from myself, working with groups of parents throughout SAC City District. There was an event that we were trying to involve the site in, and for one or another reason, the event kept getting postponed, and in our work that we do with congregations in our community, we had identified a base of parents from this specific school who were getting tired of getting canceled time after time. That one parent organized a group of over 20 parents, and we met one evening, 5:30 PM, in an apartment complex in South Sacramento to listen to parents. And I would just like to share this testimony of the intentionality that went behind that, not only for our organization as a community partner, but for parents that were realizing if they didn't get together, they were going to continue waiting for the school to listen to them, and that is what our community needs, and they're willing to meet outside of school to get their message across, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Jason Burke, another speaker gave his, their time to Mr. Burke, so he has two minutes.
Hello, Mr. Burke.
All right, my name is Jason Burke, I have been a special educator here for about 20 years, currently at Luther Burbank. So two years ago, when all the COVID and everything happened, we had to do a lot of extra work. This last superintendent signed an MOU with the SCTA, and they're going to pay people who did the extra work. For instance, myself, I did not have an instructional aide for an entire year, so I did my job and the instructional aide's job. You're supposed to be paid on June 30th of this year for work that we did in 2021, 2022, okay? June 30th came, nothing. I want you to think of the number 113, that's the number of emails, phone calls I sent. I sent emails to you guys multiple times, I got one response from Mr. Caillada, okay? One of the things that we need to do is we need to treat our staff better, and one of the ways we can do that is actually pay them, because I guarantee you, Mr. Aguilar got his paycheck on his last day. There are people who left the district, and they still haven't been paid for two years ago. Is that fair? Remember, we are the ones doing the extra work. We had, we had no subs, no subs, we had cafeterias and auditoriums full of students. Teacher didn't show up, no sub, teacher's sick with COVID, we had no sub, they split the classrooms. One teacher has 40 kids, two teachers have 40 kids in their classrooms, for weeks at a time, 40, 50, 60, and still not paid. Think about that, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next group of speakers, we have Jaime Rodriguez, followed by Sean Conley, and then Lamaya Coleman.
Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, thank you guys for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you real quick. So my name is Jaime Rodriguez, I'm with the Tree of Life, it's a nonprofit organization that helps the youth in the community. One of the things that I've learned here is that I've been going to the schools as a mentor, working with the kids, and what I found, right, is that, you know, obviously, we need to work with the parents as well, but also with the teachers, educators, because a kid is being abused, or something's going on at home, right? He comes to school, he or she comes to school, and then he's acting out, and then, while the teacher, what does the teacher do? Sends him to the principal's office because he's a bad kid, right? So the kid's already been abused at home, he's crying out for help, now the teacher's punishing him as well. Something needs to change, because we need to educate the teachers as well about trauma that's happening at home, so that we can be better prepared for these kids, because what's going to happen, the kid's not getting help anywhere. Nobody's helping him, because he's a bad, he or she's a bad kid. It's here where we are, right? We're here to support the kids and get these mentors to help these kids.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sean Conley, I am the founder and president of the Tree of Life and part of the BBOA. We're here to speak about the Miracle University School, and so growing up in Sacramento, I was a screw-up, I just did 28 years in prison, I've been home almost two years, and so I know when I was going to Valley High School, there wasn't a lot of people there for us to come and talk to us, and so I ended up getting locked up, and then I went to Daler Jun Continuation School, and it just wasn't anything, I didn't get my GED until I was 42 years old, and I'm 51 now, and so we just want to represent Miracle University School, that people were sending their kids there, the district, so that way they can get some help and they can graduate, thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello, my name's Lamaya Coleman, I'm a district parent, district sub, SCTA member, and a member of SAC Act. As you guys know, I strongly support community schools in its intended, in its intended format. I'm concerned that it isn't being implemented, implemented with fidelity, especially in terms of the inclusive and collaborative leadership and governance aspect. I'm glad the district and union now have an agreement to work together, but even in forming a binding agreement, in the true spirit of community schools, it wouldn't have happened without the other, without parents, without community, it's, it should be community schools, so without wider involvement. Now that we're here, there needs to be active inclusion of parent and community, especially the parents that probably feel the least welcome and the least comfortable getting involved. There's a long history of schools and many parent communities, shoot.
Thank you.
Next speakers, we have Nicole DeVore, followed by April Ibarra, and Ms. Ibarra has five cards total, so five minutes.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Nicole DeVore, I am an educator just down the street. I'm here to encourage you to get much more directly involved with the negotiations. All of us that sit on the SCTA negotiations team volunteer our time. Your team does not, your team is paid. I'm much happier that, like, it started off well, it started off really well, and then it took a left turn, and after we discussed last year's offer from SCTA, SUSD offered us a regressive offer. It's embarrassing, it's demeaning, demeaning is the word I should use, not embarrassing. You should be embarrassed, you should get much more directly involved and talk with your negotiations people, they should not be offering us so little for last year.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Board, and good evening to our new student representative Gracie, and also to Superintendent Allen. And I want to, before I get started, I want to say to the gentleman who came up here and said he was a screw-up, sir, you're not a screw-up, you are a product of this failed institution that has failed so many of us, and this is why I'm here today to talk about how we can not continue to fail students. With that said, I hope you all had a nice summer, and as we prepare for the start of 2023-24 school year, I want to express my appreciation and gratitude towards you, Lisa Allen. I want to say that it makes me very proud to see a woman of color who has dedicated so many years to this district, and I hope you consider staying in this position, and I mean that truly. With that said, Lisa, in your previous role, you expressed very clearly your desire to support the idea of coming to an agreement on community schools with SCTA, and it brings me great joy that I can say I appreciate the willingness to come in with your positive attitude and your cooperation in that. Because of that, on August 4th, we have a clear example that collaborative work can happen and will continue happening between SUSD and SCTA. And on that note, the fourth was just the beginning. Although SUSD has made many attempts to create equitable engagement practices, much like those that were mentioned just minutes ago, far too often, that's not exactly what's taking place. So it's necessary that we begin to look at the current community schools model as an innovation of how SUSD shares leadership, and how SUSD has equitably and successfully, or will equitably and successfully engage its families, its students, its community in whole, and its educators. As a district, we need to quickly and meaningfully begin to fulfill this agreement, as there's not a lot of time, and there are 18 schools and communities that are currently depending on it. I hope that as you are getting ready to create the steering committees, the appointees that are selected, I hope that you're looking to people who are there and their communities currently advocating and seeking changes that are equitable, not only in education, but also from a social justice and human rights standpoint, so that all families and students are being represented. Everyone has the right, responsibility, and ability to be a leader, and how we define leadership in this district will influence how our families and students will participate. Teachers are purposeful, professional human beings, and through our community schools approach, there will be a space to also embrace their qualities. Collaboratively, we can bring our shared knowledge and become the energy force of and for the community and their schools. Student achievement in the context of leadership capacity is much broader than test scores, it includes self-knowledge, social maturity, personal resiliency, and civic development. Community schools should also be very intentional with how it engages our youth. Again, I look forward to this much-needed change, and I hope that the process will begin quickly. I also want to bring attention to two other topics. The first one is that our dance room at Hiram Johnson High School, as I've shared before, I have two daughters at Hiram Johnson, one is a senior and one is a sophomore. Their dance room at Hiram Johnson has no air conditioning or adequate ventilation in their room where the cheer team practices, and as you know, we've been facing some heat days. They're lucky if other sports teams aren't using their gym. They're lucky if other sports teams aren't using their gyms, and so they're able to then use it, but typically they have other sports that are utilizing them. So sometimes, when it's really hot, like these past few days, they'll share space, but it's not really fair or equitable in comparison to other schools and the spaces that they're provided. So I'm asking that you please give these students a space that they can have and that they would have access to year-round with working cooling and heating systems. The team has been working really hard over this past year, and they won about four to five awards in their cheer camp that they had at West Campus over the weekend. Lastly, I'm concerned about a phone call that I received last week in regards to my daughter's I E plea and her placement in special day classes. I was very disappointed when I was informed that all high school special day classes will only be offered at Kennedy and Health Professions, and this is a matter that should have included families and students, and it didn't. The district is already struggling to meet transportation needs, and thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Next group of speakers, Dr. Kahir Raja, Maria Rangel, and Jerome Anderson.
Dr. Raj. Are these the people sending or they're coming down as well?
No.
They can all be right behind you, man. It's good.
You're just standing. You're a lot of the middle. Okay, I'll go, I'll talk first.
All right.
Ready? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Kadir Raja. I'm the founder of Miracle University Nonprofit and Dropout Prevention Program. Our mission is to end the dropout crisis in Sacramento County. Really briefly, the dropout crisis is 4,000 high school dropouts a year in our Sacramento County that produce almost 80% of our crimes unhoused and victims of trafficking costing so many lives. The reason the dropout crisis is really something of a calling for me is because spent about 20 years as California Teacher of the Year and Principal, transforming thousands of failing high school students who were failing with success on report card, ankle monitors, headed to juvenile hall, missing from school, and transforming them into scholars and allowing them to unleash their potential. We have a program now. It's called Miracle University. We do three things. We surround every failing high school student with the right mentor, the right effective culture-responsive tutor, and a personalized internship. And we just had 100% graduation rate, so we look forward to working with SAC City. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Rangel.
Do you guys need a translator?
I can translate.
There's a translator right here, though. Come on, come on down. It's what he's paid for.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Rangel. Soy la secretaria de la Fundación Benito Juárez.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Rangel, and I'm the secretary, pardon, of the foundation, foundation?
Benito Juárez.
Benito Juárez.
Estamos aquí para ayudar a los representando, representando a los padres hispanos y para que ayuden a nuestros estudiantes a que se graduen de la high school.
We're here representing the Hispanic community and asking the board to help our students graduate from high school.
Queremos que los ayuden porque hay muchos fracasos con nuestra gente latina, nuestros estudiantes.
We want you guys to help them because there's lots of failures in the students of the Latino community.
Necesitan más apoyo. Y si, y si no les dan el apoyo, ellos terminan en las drogas, en las pantillas, en las cárceles.
And they need more support because if they do not receive that support, they end in the gangs, in the jail, in the streets.
Y queremos que los ayuden para que ellos se graduen, y si no les dan la ayuda, nosotros los padres los vamos a poner en la, en la universidad, en la Escuela Milagros, porque allí reciben mucha ayuda.
And we want you guys to help them so that they finish high school and graduate. If they don't, we put them in Miracle University.
Los ayudan en la Universidad Milagros para que se graduen y sean alguien en la vida.
So that at Miracle University, they can graduate from high school and be somebody in life.
No queremos ver nuestros, nuestros hijos en las calles. Queremos que, necesitamos el apoyo de la escuela.
We do not want to see our kids in the streets. We need the support from the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing, brother?
Good evening. My name is Jerome Alvin Anderson, and I'm here on behalf of SARS Self-Service Recovery, and we are here to stop the high school dropout rate. Dr. Raja mentioned that there is 4,000 failing kids on track to drop out of high school. I'm a crisis interventionist worker, a peer mentor, and I walk inside the hallways of these schools, and I enter to the hearts of these youth. Out of those 4,000, 80% of these dropouts will wind up inside of YDF, that's a youth detention facility, ultimately going to state prison. I'm gonna give you another fact. It costs $15,000 a year whether a child is failing or succeeding in school. These are invisible kids. Out of the 15,000, the Miracle University only needs three. The taxpayers save 12, and these kids were once invisible, the minuses become miracles. I know what it looks and smells like to be forgotten about. I served a life without the possibility of parole sentence from the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you.
Next group of speakers, Tio De Niro Sesums, Kwan Howard, Carmen IU, and Aaron Cardoza.
Congratulations to Gracie.
Floor is yours.
All right. There's this guy in prison, and he's writing his wife, knowing that soldiers are reading. The wife writes back like, honey, I don't think I'm gonna be able to grow potatoes because the ground is too hard. We can't plant because of soil, we can't get through. Her husband writes her back and says, honey, don't dig anywhere near the house because that's where I hid the weapons. The next day, soldiers show up, and they begin to dig with shovels and axes through that ground. After the soldiers leave, she writes him and says, honey, the strangest thing, these soldiers showed up and just dug through our ground. He writes her back and says, now you can plant your potatoes. If you only, if you're only looking at the actions of the soldiers, you would say that that is destructive, but from the right perspective, it was productive. The danger is that we only see based on where we sit. If we never change your seating, then you have an isolated view on what the perspective is. Be open to the larger picture. The larger picture is Miracle University.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is K. John Howard, and like Dr. Raja was saying, everyone who has the potential to come into Miracle University, they will graduate, because I was also the student who was written off as a potential person who's gonna drop out, and ain't nobody really think I was going to graduate because of what I was doing. I was ditching school all the time. I didn't really care about school like that, but I did know I wanted to do something, and Dr. Raja did help me get there, and I was able to graduate on time, make sure I did it, everything I needed to do to graduate. And every student that does graduate or gets, you know, put into Miracle University program, they do still have the same exact success rate I did, because I also thought I was gonna graduate. And everyone who's going to come into the ninth grade, like, you know, eighth-grade students who are coming in, just coming into high school, you're gonna get influenced a lot, so, and that's the same thing with having me. I got influenced a lot, and then you fall into it, but once you have, you know, the right people around you, you still be able to succeed because it's just, you know, your circle. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, trusted board members. My name is Carmen Aon, a former student of the Twin Rivers Unified School District and UC Berkeley alumni. Byproduct of Dr. Raja's mentorship, and with his help, I was able to gain admission to UC Berkeley, so I'm here to encourage and advocate for the Miracle University Prevention, Dropout Prevention Program for the District of Sacramento. This program was indicated with Twin Rivers, and as we seen, we seen very decreases in our dropout rates and with students going into the universities and career forces. It's no surprise that Black and Brown students are the ones going into the school-to-prison pipeline. If you walk the street, you'll see, you know, drug trafficking, prostitution. I live in the city of Sacramento and in this district as well, so we see these issues firsthand. And as a district, as a board members, I want to advocate for the Miracle University Dropout Prevention Program and encourage you guys all to vote on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good day, board. My name is Aaron Cardoza. I'm a president of an organization called Brother to Brother, where we work with a lot of youth that gun and gang violence. Most of our kids, the youth around Sacramento and in the Del Paso Heights area, are, it's dropouts. And because they drop out, they end up going to prison or they go to juvenile hall. I'm here to speak about Miracle University because I once was a dropout. At 10th grade, I dropped out of 10th grade. Just last year, I graduated and got my high school diploma and walked the stage in 2022. But that's due and thanked, thanked to the guy that actually is the founder of Miracle University, Dr. Raja. He was a mentor to me, right? And he also was a tutor, because I had a problem with math, and I really wasn't good at it, right? And so I just gave up on school, because one subject can just make you say, forget this, right? And so he was a really good tutor and a mentor to me, and I ended up graduating in 2023. So I am here to stamp Miracle University, and I think you guys should too. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Next group of speakers, we have Thurman Holling, followed by Kristen Thomas, Marvell Wilson, and Lorenzo Landeros. How you doing, brother?
How you doing? How you doing, board? My name is Thurman Holling. I'm with Hooked on Fishing, Not on Violence, and I'm here to represent Miracle University. And why I know that? Every potential high school dropout must be in the Miracle University Dropout Prevention Program. Number one reason, incarceration. The odds are stacked against them, and the prevention program would teach them why. They should stay in school and graduate and receive their high school diploma, and how to use it to move forward in life and work towards a career so they could be paid living wages. Number two, becoming teen parents. They will be taught what it takes to be in a teen parent and having the responsibility and the financial obligations of raising the next generation. Number three, idle time. This is one of the worst ones, because they're not being in school or in the Miracle University Prevention Program, young teenagers will not, might, but will do and try stronger drugs, drink alcohol, steal, and toxic stress on all the communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys. My name is Christina, and I'm Jesse's mom. I'm a single mom, which that's pretty common in the Black community. Jesse was, fell in school. More towards the end, like the 11th grade, he started doing really bad, and they had all these different programs that was coming. You guys know that we went through COVID, and it just seemed like nothing helped. I kind of gave up as his mom, because I've been fighting with him for a couple of years through COVID. It's not easy to say that, but then Dr. Raja came along in the Miracle program, and I was like, oh, here comes another program. And, I mean, I'm just blown away by the results. Totally different. I got my baby back, and I'll let him speak a little bit to you guys, but I just wanted to give a little bit of background where he came from.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jesse Smith. I recently just graduated from Pacific High School through the Miracle program. I'd like to share a little bit of my story. I'm the first Black male to graduate high school in my family. The Miracle program held me so much with inspiration, tutoring, providing transportation. My car broke down, and even times when I felt like giving up, Dr. Raja came to my house, pushing me not to give up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marvell Wilson. I'm a member of the Men's Healing Group, as well as an advocate for the Black Business Owners Association, as well as this particular Miracle University. I was disturbed to find that 4,000 of our youth drop out, not just recently, but on an ongoing basis. And we're, we're very, very moved to find that a high percentage of those youth end up in the system and are not very productive. So we're, as our group congregates, we are moving toward looking at how we can impact that statistic and how we can urge our youth to swing their energy toward a program like the university. So we're looking forward to you guys giving us an endorsement as well.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lorenzo. I'd like to share a little story of myself with Miracle University. So it started a couple months ago, like, beginning of the year. I wasn't on track of graduating and started falling to other things that wasn't good for myself and for others. And I've, to be honest, I was done, thinking I was done with school in middle school, because I already had skipped seventh grade, I went back eighth grade, and then freshman year came, and then COVID came, and I just started giving up on school. And then I met Dr. Raja. My mom, he got a call, my mom got a call from him and wanted to meet up with him, but it was just another program that wanted to help me, but I, you know, every, there was no other, I didn't, I didn't expect it to be like this one, the results after, you know, I was asked and just graduated, and yeah, he just helped me, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next group of speakers, we have Pastor Louis Keys, followed by Danavy Gaspar, Tamara Eugene, and then Kathy Lester.
Police chief? Okay. There. Charger? Yours don't work.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I'm here to advocate on behalf of Dr. Raja and Miracle University Dropout Prevention Program. By definition, a miracle is an extremely outstanding unusual event thing or accomplishment, but in order for a miracle, but I realize, but in order for a miracle to take place, to be deemed a miracle, it must have a few factors in place, meaning it has to be a lack of hope, a lack of faith, and a lack of support. Miracle University Dropout Prevention Program, led by Dr. Kadir Raja and his team, they stand with young people and their families, offering them that hope, offering them, pouring into them an ounce of faith, as well as offering them, lending a hand of support, so that they can see a miracle of graduation take place in these young people. Again, we don't have to go through the statistics, you guys have heard that a ton, but one thing I will say is, getting behind this program, you will see a drastic change in young people and the dynamics and the numbers here in the city. Thank you, guys.
Give us one second. He's coming down. Thank you.
Good night.
My nombre es Daneri. Soy de Centroamérica, Guatemala.
My name is Daneri. I'm from Central America, from Guatemala.
Vengo a contarles sobre mi graduación en cómo pude graduarme en la escuela de Twin Rivers.
I'll be here to talk to you about how I graduated from Twin Rivers School.
Gracias a Twin Rivers por ponerme en la aplicación de la programa de milagro. Es un programa que nos ayuda a graduarnos y que todo sueño de jóvenes como yo es poder graduarse.
I want to thank Twin Rivers for connecting me with the program Milagro. It's a program that helps us to graduate, and that's the dream of all the youth like me.
Y todos dueños de los jóvenes que no podemos ejercer lenguaje inglés.
They also help us, especially people like me that cannot talk or have not dominated English very well yet.
Es poder graduarnos y tener una mejor vida y un mejor futuro.
And our dream is to graduate and have a better future.
Y otra cosa para los jóvenes y señoritas, recomiendo la disciplina y la autodisciplina porque sin, sin autodisciplinarnos no podemos como lograr el sueño. porque sin autodisciplinar nos no podemos como lograr el sueño.
And one of the things that I do recommend to youth, ladies and gentlemen, that discipline is what we need so that we can obtain what we want for our future.
Gracias a Twin River por hacerme. Gracias.
And thank you for Twin Rivers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, board. My name is Tamara Eugene and I am a high school teacher within the region. I am advocating for the Miracle University Dropout Prevention Program from a teacher's perspective to be implemented in two-year high schools. I've been teaching for about five to 10 years and like many other teachers, I've seen firsthand the struggles of students emotionally, behaviorally, and mentally due to lack of support, especially in our underserved communities. It seems to have become normalized for teachers to tolerate all kinds of behaviors within the classroom while trying to teach. I've experienced this can be counterproductive as well as unfair for both students and teachers, creating frustration and an unsafe learning environment and teacher burnout. Like many other teachers, I love teaching, but I too have experienced burnout. With the Miracle University Prevention Dropout Program, it advocates for teachers to support, to help students with different issues that we can't that we can't address. So I'm asking that you consider this program and give each student an opportunity to have a village behind them. Thank you so much.
Good evening, board. My name is Kathy Lester and I represent Wayne Shepherd Resource Center and we work in the community. And I'm here to encourage the board to look into Miracle University because right now we already have a lot of kids that's dropped out of school, wondering, they're up and down the streets. And it's not only in the high school, it's starting at in our elementary school where our kids are shutting down as early as our elementary school. And as we, they graduate on into high school, they're placing an impossible list of dropouts. And we want to encourage our young people because that's our future. You got to be careful. We're sitting here today. Tomorrow, our young kids are going to be taking over. So we have to get our kids ready to be prepared for tomorrow so they'll be our leaders of tomorrow. They may be considered incorrigible today, but see, we can make a change. And that's what Miracle University is representing a change.
Thank you.
Next speaker, we have just one name, Ketsal, and then Ricky Keckton, Nathan Gregorio, and Faison Sarlito.
Closer.
My name is Kirk Sali and I think Miracle University program will benefit our schools and families because it gives us opportunities such as culturally responsive teaching and personalized internships and many more benefits to help my fellow classmates and all around Sacramento District.
Thank you.
My name is Ricky and I think the university program will benefit our community because it keeps students out of trouble and gives them something to do. And it's it's also something to look forward to and will help benefit benefit our future and make our families proud and not like angry at us. Thank you.
My name is Nathan Gregorio. I attend Hiram Johnson and I also think the Miracle University program is going to benefit the school and like all our families. And it's going to give us way more opportunities and stuff like I agree with all what they say with the cultural response, responsive teaching and personalized internships. And I feel like it's just going to benefit us overall.
Thank you.
My name is Fabian Salzelo and I attend Hiram Johnson High School and I also go to the after-school program named Self-Awareness and Recovery. We as a whole need programs like SAR to not only help us with our homework, but to also support more of my fellow students who are at risk of being dropouts from high schools. We need as a whole to the help of Miracle University to give us, give my fellow classmates as well, all students in high school a chance to succeed and have some hope and not be given up on so that plenty of my peers won't end up in the streets or worse yet, end up in prison system. So please hear us out.
Thank you.
My name is Rafael Espino. I attend to Hiram Johnson. Today I'm here to talk about students dropping out and how it's going to affect our community and how the Miracle University program will benefit us and give us personalized internship.
Thank you.
My name is Oscar Pedraza and I attend Hiram Johnson. And I also attend the after-school program called Self-Awareness and Recovery Program. And I'm here to talk about how they've helped me with school and like and just other needs. They they helped me get my grades up when I was when I was failing all of my classes. They they helped me with like work and just gave me, they gave me advice and like more ways to focus on school and to do better in school. We need more programs like this, just like Miracle University to help my fellow classmates and be able to be better tutored and have a chance to succeed, to be able to accomplish our goals and have a bright future.
Thank you.
Next group, we have Rafael Espino, followed by Oscar Pedraza and Savannah Russell.
Good evening. I'm not the best speaker, but I came here because this is kind of emotional for me. I had a baby young and I was almost a dropout many times. I didn't, I was getting a lot of weird stuff happening at home. I had my friends in the streets and their parents didn't care about them and were on drugs. And we all had no help and we just stuck and we're at the ages of like nine, 10, 11. It starts early for a lot of us, sometimes even children, children. So I know we all need help. I never even, I graduated high school and I wasn't supposed to. I had a very creepy kind of principal actually give me credits I wasn't allowed to have. That passed me out of high school. Then I didn't do anything about that and I ran away after he gave me those, but I still ran to Vegas and threw my life away, three months pregnant with my daughter because I had no help. So if I'd had this Miracle University program, I wouldn't even still be stuck as I am right now. And I'm 27 years old and I've been in this life since I was like 13. So I'm trying as hard as I can to get out. And honestly, I want to vouch and get a job and hopefully work with you guys and the kids of my community because everybody around me is scaring me. And if they had your guys' help, this wouldn't happen. If I'd had that help, I would never went there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for Rafael Espino and Oscar Pedraza.
Okay, okay.
Next to Rebecca Tolliver and Taron Tolliver.
Okay. You can go to the next one.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody who spoke today. We're going to move on to item 8.0, Communications, Employee Organization Reports, SCTA. And welcome to Nikki, the new president of SCTA.
President Rhodes. Good evening, members of the board and our new student member. Nice to see you here tonight. So, good evening. I'm Nikki Malevsky. I'm the president of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. Welcome everyone back. A lot has changed since we met last time. On behalf of nearly 3,000 educators represented by SCTA, we wanted to express our appreciation to the majority of this board that finally took the necessary steps to move the district in a more constructive, collaborative, and inclusive direction. In the few short weeks that Lisa Allen has stepped up into the role of acting superintendent, and I looked in the wrong place for you, Lisa. Sorry. Many positive improvements have already occurred. We have reached an agreement on implementing community schools that my colleague Shanna Justice is going to use some of my time to speak to you about, that incorporates the core principles of shared decision-making and true student, parent, and educator community involvement, just like the parents and community members that came and spoke to you tonight are looking to have. We have also reached an agreement on the three pre-service days of professional development for staff that includes anti-racist and implicit bias training. Additionally, we just last night, we received an email from Crystal Thomas, the LCAP Executive Director. The email's subject line said, "Let's collaborate around LCAP." This is the first time that any district administrator has ever reached out to us to solicit our input regarding LCAP. Perhaps just as significantly, we have resumed negotiations regarding our wage reopener. And although, as in any negotiations, there can be a few bumps along the way, the leaders and the composition of the district's bargaining team, including Chief Human Resource Officer Consey McCarron, Chief Academic Officer Yvonne Wright, Assistant Superintendent for the Business Services Jesse Castillo, and Monica Garland from Human Resources, have created an entirely different climate at the bargaining table. And while differences remain, we believe that there is a shared priority in addressing the acute staffing shortage. With 200 vacancies a month certificated staff, that is, that greatly inhibits our students' ability to receive the education that they deserve. So over the past several weeks, we have shared our budgeting solutions that we believe will overcome the differences between the district's last position and ours, our proposals. Nevertheless, we still have a lot of work to do and we appreciate the board creating a sense of urgency to get these issues resolved so that we can use the momentum to continue moving the district in a positive direction. And I want to turn the rest of my time over to Shanna.
Good evening, and I will not use the whole 12 minutes, I promise. So, good evening, Board President Rhodes, Board members. Welcome to the new student board member and Superintendent Allen. It's nice to be able to say that. Hopefully, I can continue to say that for quite a while. So I'm happy to be before you tonight with the signed Community Schools Agreement, right, official on August 4. And I firmly believe that this agreement would not have happened without the leadership of Superintendent Allen. So for the last year, most of the community schools conversations here at board meetings and elsewhere have been around the what of community schools, right? Getting the required pieces in place, making sure community schools in Sex City follow both the letter and the spirit of the California Community Schools Law. But now that we have an agreement on the what, I think it is vital that we circle back and focus on the why of community schools. So most of us got into this profession because we believe in the power of education to transform lives and communities. And when I started teaching 32 years ago, actually, I thought the journey toward, I thought of the journey toward equity as a staircase, right? Here where we are now, here's where we need to go, right? Equity is at the top of the stairs. And if we just, right, put in the effort, get the right curriculum programs, that we can get to that top, right? We can reach the top of that staircase, equity. What I've come to realize, 32 years working our tails off with good people and great programs, is that the staircase analogy isn't the right one. The staircase is a neutral system, right? It neither works for you nor against you. It's just there as a structure, as a tool to use to get from one level to the next. But the education system, as conceived over 100 years ago, isn't neutral. It's inequitable by design, right? The inequity is a feature of the system, not a bug. So to go back to my analogy, instead of equity being stairs we need to climb, what we're really doing, and have been trying to do, is to go up a down escalator, right? We're trying to go up and it's pulling us right back down, right? So no matter how hard we try to reach equity, the system's pulling us in the opposite direction. We are working really hard to reach equity, but to the outside, those who can't see we're actually on a down escalator, it doesn't look like we're moving, right? It just looks like we're standing still, right? And it makes like, it looks like from the outside, we're making little to no progress. So the why of the transformative community school model, and I'm going to use transformative community school model because there's lots of community school models out there, and they're not all transformative, right? But the why of it is that it's a tool. It's not a program. It's a tool. It's a strategy to change the system, right? To get the system working toward equity instead of against it. So to turn, what we need to do is turn that down escalator into an up one. And that's what the transformative community school model is all about. And while all four California pillars and the six N E A pillars of community schools is necessary to have a high functioning community school, the pillar that makes community schools transformative is the one around collaborative leadership. There have been many iterations of community schools over the years all over the country. Most of them have focused mostly on wraparound services, but not all of those schools are transformative, right? Actually making inroads towards equity. Research has shown that it is the schools that have a deep commitment to collaborative leadership and authentic shared decision-making that we're able to transform the system and make significant progress toward equity. We need to keep the why of community schools and the collaborative collaborative leadership pillar in the forefront as we do the work of implementing community schools. And we have a lot of work to do. We have 18 community schools now, right? I'm at one of them, right? And I'm going to refer to it from now on as Luther Burbank Community High School, right? We have 18 principals that need to be brought up to speed on both the why and the what of the community schools model because most of them don't know much about it, if anything. We have the high, a district, we have a district lead community schools training specialist and 18 site community school training specialists we need to hire. We have a district community schools advisory committee and 18 site community schools implementation teams to form. And that's only what needs to happen within the next 60 days or so. My hope is that not only do the 18 community schools embrace the why and the what of community schools, but that the entire district embraces them as well. The phrase "nothing about us without us" really embodies what community schools are all about. We need the entire system working together towards equity. So let's be the up escalator and climb towards equity together as a community. Again, nothing about us without us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to SEIU. I see a couple of brothers there. Come on down.
Hi, board members. I'm here to kick it off by introducing Jim Riffle to you, all of you, our new vice president. Jim?
Most of you know me by now. A lot of the times I was in the Zoom and I was fairly quiet. Well, now I'm the vice president and that changes. I would like to first start off with thanking you from the bottom of my heart for Juneteenth. Passing Juneteenth was a major, major win and you guys really came through. We were hoping to get it for the next, for this next year. You guys came through and gave it to us for last year also. That was fantastic. Thank you. Bless you. We do have some issues still to go, some hurdles to go over. Hari?
Just simply, simply, we have an outstanding demand to bargain, our reopener contract, our successor contract. Every day is a delay and increases the liability of the district. It's a failure to bargain. This can be, this wrong can be righted quickly, easily. We are ready and prepared as now Superintendent Allen knows. We would like for the district to approach us post haste and give us dates. We want to bargain. We've been ready and the district has known this now for over a year. So please, we need this wrong to be righted immediately. Very important. Very important.
We were notified just a couple, almost a week ago, that payroll was an issue for our S C I U members that were in summer school. They would not be getting their pay on time. Come on, guys. This is not the first summer school that's happened here. This should not have happened at all. We know there's a new fiscal year. We've done this before. There's no reason it should happen. We have people that are... You heard a couple of months ago of one of our members, an instructional aide, who is full-time, and she gave up her apartment to live in her car so she could still eat. She and her daughter were on the brink of not being able to eat, and she gave away her apartment so that she could still feed her child. One of our employees. That's not acceptable.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have T C S Teamsters or U P E in the building? No. Okay. We're going to go to district advisory committees. Do we have the C A C? D L A C? L cap? Student Advisory Council? Okay, no updates. All right. B triple A B? B triple A B? You come to us on a day back. You're dressed up. This must be welcoming, right? You're welcoming us, yeah. Welcome, my brother.
I actually didn't even know that there was a board meeting until earlier. I was speaking with Crystal about L cap stuff, and she told me that there was a meeting, so.
You're just dressed up to be dressed up.
You know, always run her. But you know, that's the power of community and networking, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Take care of each other. I'm Terrance Gladney, newly elected chair of B triple A B, the Black African-American Advisory Board. We've, although we've been, as an entire general body and organization, on a hiatus, our new executive committee has been busy with planning the transitional work following the tremendous leadership of Julius Austin, who was also a task force member who stepped into the role of chair to lead us over the last couple of years. Our newly elected board is myself as chair, Conrad Crump as our vice chair, Nakisha Thomas as our secretary, and Malachi Smith, who is a grandparent, multi-generational caretaker, as our parliamentarian. The power of our new executive committee is Conrad Crump and I both represent board member Phillips on the L cap PAC committee. So there is a lot of intersection in our work. A lot of our recommendations have been uplifted and intersected in the L cap recommendations. So our goal is to continue that. But we are laser-focused on uplifting our 13 recommendations, whether outstanding or partially fulfilled, as our North Star, and that'll be our guiding light for all the work that we do. We hope to set a model, not only for other parent groups, but also for our board and our district, about being seemingly focused on the things that we state are important to us. And we understand that that's not just in words and not only in action, but it's also around the dollars that we spend, that specify and identify our priorities. So with Conrad and I both being on the L cap, we intend to have a lot of conversations back and forth and uplift voices of both spaces in the work that we do. I'm tremendously blessed to have a great team. And again, through Julius's leadership, through Dr. Robin Fisher's leadership, we're in a great place, but we still require support. It is possible for us to do the work, you know, on our own. But if we're going to be a community district, if we're going to have community schools, if we're going to represent all of our most cherished assets, which are our young people at our schools, our scholars, and improve the outcome specifically for Black and African-American scholars, then we need everyone to stand up and recognize the failures that have existed for generations way beyond all of us. We say that the children are going to be the change, but they can only do that if we empower them. So welcome to our new student board member. And obviously, thank you to Liam for service. That was tremendous in bringing a voice that was not previously present in that space. But on behalf of all of our scholars, you know, let's get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll be going to item 9.1, and approve interim superintendent agreement for Lisa Allen, and I will be taking this on. Okay, so the next item addresses the board's discussion and possible approval of an employment agreement with interim superintendent Allen. The proposed contract contains the following material terms. The terms of the contract is for 2023-2024 school year. If a permanent superintendent is hired during this time, the interim superintendent will return to her position as deputy superintendent upon the assumption of duties of the permanent superintendent. The interim superintendent's base salary for the current school year is $325,000. The interim superintendent will continue to receive the same health and welfare benefits that she currently receives as deputy superintendent. No additional compensation shall be paid for health or welfare benefits. The interim superintendent will continue to occur the same sick leave and the vacation leave that she currently occurs as deputy superintendent. The interim superintendent work year will be 239 workdays. This concludes the summary of the material items to the superintendent's contract. Complete copies are available from the district office upon request. Is there any public comments on this topic?
There is not.
Okay. Is there any board discussion? If you have any board discussion, please hop in the queue. Okay. No board discussion. Is there a motion? So move is second? Second? Move, second? All right. Roll call vote from each member. You get to call your vote for the thing. I can do it if you want me to. If it feels weird, I do it. I do it. Feel strange. Okay. Member Jean?
Aye.
Hey. All right. Member Jean. Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett? I'm sorry, Mr. Pritchard. Member Rhodes, me, yes. Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Student preferential?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it with member Pritchett not in attendance. Congratulations, interim superintendent. Okay. Moving on to item 9.2, approve interim deputy superintendent agreement for Mary Harden Young. The next item addresses the board's discussion and possible approval of the employment agreement with interim deputy superintendent Mary Harden Young. The proposed contract contains the following material terms. The term of the contract is for the 2023-2024 school year. If a permanent superintendent is hired during this time, the interim deputy superintendent will return to her position as deputy chief academic officer upon the assumption of the duties of the permanent superintendent and deputy superintendent. The interim deputy superintendent will be placed at range 37, step 6, on the superintendent's cabinet annual rate salary schedule for the 2021-2022 school year, which represents a salary of $214,050. The interim deputy superintendent will continue to receive the same health and welfare benefits that she currently receives as a deputy chief academic officer. No additional compensation shall be paid for health or welfare benefits. The interim deputy superintendent will continue to occur the same sick leave and vacation leave that she is currently occurs as deputy chief academic officer. This concludes the summary of the material terms to the interim deputy superintendent contract. Complete copies are available from the district office upon request. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is not.
Okay. Is there any board discussion on this item? None. Okay. Is there a motion? So it was the second? Second, okay, by member Villa. Okay. Let's call a vote this time, superintendent.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett, out. Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Congratulations, deputy superintendent. Okay. Side note, board, that was great. By the way, it was fast, that's what I'm saying. Item 9.3. I'm looking at the same thing. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
I know.
It's all because of Jess Jean, actually. So item, item 9.3, 2023-24, 45-day revision budget update. Mr. Castillo?
Good evening, President Rhodes, members of the board, Superintendent Allen. This is the 45-day budget revise. Clicker here. Would you mind moving to the next slide for me, please? Thank you. So to start off with... Oh, wrong way. Okay. Thank you. There we go. So starting off with the agenda, we'll be just taking a quick look at the acronyms you'll be seeing in the presentation, then move on into an overview of the 45-day revise along with the summary of changes, followed by our updated multi-year projections and our next steps in financial reporting. This is the quick table of acronyms for reference in the presentation. Just a quick overview of the 45-day revise. Per Education Code, the district has 45 days to make adjustments or revisions to its budget once the state enacts its final budget. This year, we approved our adopted budget at the June 22 board meeting, and the Governor Newsom signed into law the enacted budget on June 27. And there were a few minor changes at that time, and so we've recognized those changes along with a few local adjustments within this 45-day budget revise. This is a summary of changes, starting with the unrestricted side. We did see a slight increase in our ADA, in our lottery funding rates per ADA. So we increased our revenue and expenditures accordingly. We also saw a slight increase in our unrestricted ongoing expenditures of about $700,000 related to additional positions as well as other budget adjustments made since our adopted budget back in June. Moving on to the restricted changes, we also saw an increase on our restricted lottery dollars and increased the revenue and expenditures accordingly. We also saw a change for our one-time arts-music instructional materials and our learning recovery emergency block grant. And these are a little tricky because they actually were apportioned in 22-23. But during the 23-24 enacted budget, the governor made some changes to those dollars. And so for one-time arts-music, we did recognize that they didn't actually have as big a reduction as they were projecting at the May revise. It actually turned out to be about a 5.5% reduction. So we recognized and increased that in arts-music. And then moving on to learning recovery, at the May revise, they were projecting, they actually think about a higher reduction than currently. And so they did actually enact a 14% reduction in those funds. We didn't have that built into our 22-23 estimated actuals at the time of the adopted budget. We're recognizing that reduction now. This shows how that flows into our multi-year projections update. So those two pieces that I was speaking to, the changes to the one-time dollars, those will be reflected in our 22-23 ending balance, which flows into the 23-24 beginning balance. And that's what you'll, will you see those adjustments in this table? And then looking at our multi-year projections are the other minor changes to the lottery funds and the slight increases in our unrestricted expenditures. The top table shows our 45-day revise multi-year projections compared to where we were back in June with our adopted budget. Moving on to next steps in our financial reporting. In August, we're continuing to monitor enrollment projections and continue that on until the first few weeks of school and make staffing adjustments as needed. And then mid-September, at our September 21 board meeting, we'll be presenting our 22-23 honored actuals. And that's where you'll see where we actually ended the year for 22-23. We'll also be sharing our FICMAT update at that board meeting as well. Moving on to December 2023, that's when we'll have our first interim report. This will recognize, of course, that updated end-of-fund balance as well as any budget adjustments we make between now and that period of time. We'll also be presenting our financial independent financial audit report at that time. And then moving on to January 2024, when we have the governor's budget proposal for the following year for 24-25. This is the high-level outline of our next steps in financial reporting. And moving on to any questions and answers.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment around this topic?
We do not.
Okay. Board discussion. If you have anything, please hop in the queue. As a way of, sometimes people jump in late. Okay. So seeing that we have no board discussion and no board comment, this is the information... Oh. She got me.
I just didn't want it to go by without saying thank you for all the work and how you've stepped up to make sure that all of this has happened. We just really appreciate you.
Of course. Thank you.
Yes. I concur. So thank you very much. And that's informational items. So thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to go to item 9.4, approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators. And this is going to be a conference, and then we're going to move into action. Hello. Who are yours?
Good evening, Board President Rhodes, board members, and interim superintendent Allen. My name is Tammy Moore. I'm the Human Resources Compliance Analyst. I'm here this evening with Dr. Tiffany Smith Simmons, Director of Talent Management, and Carla Joseph, Human Resource Analyst. We are here this evening to present for board approval... Oh, thank you, Tiffany. The annual declaration of need to be on file with the Commission of Teacher Credentialing for the 23-24 school year. Similar to prior years, the request provides the district the needed flexibility to fill positions in identified areas of need and allow educators to meet the minimum requirements to support and the time they need to complete the requirements for their credential. Here are the trends for the prior year's requests of declaration of needs for our district. And here are our neighboring districts' areas of anticipated need for emergency permits and limited assignment permits for the 23-24 school year. This slide shows a breakdown of, an example of the types of emergency permits based on historical needs and trends. And I'll let Tiffany speak to recruitment.
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to share or highlight some of our recruitment efforts this year.[1662.94] They looked very different than in past years. We had a very aggressive recruitment cycle, beginning in January of twenty-twenty-three. We offered eighty-six open contracts. Six teachers have completed their science residency program, and so they will be science teachers in our district. We have three teacher, I'm sorry, transition teacher residency programs, partnerships with SCHOY, Sac State, and as well as a consortium of neighboring districts. And we have, they focus in their highlighted there, transitional kindergarten classes, special education classes, and also one featuring residents of color that we're doing a pilot program at Washington Elementary. Our Local Solutions Grant has ended at the conclusion of the year, but we were able to leverage those funds to support our recruitment efforts as special education teachers across the state.
Perfect. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Do we have any board comment on this item? Member Villa.
I just want to applaud your efforts for the recruitment, the activities that you guys have been doing. I've saw you at the state fair, you guys have been at different events. I've been told how engaging your group is, and I've been in conversations where I can hear them actually talking to folks, and it's such a breath of fresh air, and I really appreciate the way that we're trying to fill these vacancies creatively. So, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move this into action now. Quick, really quick, for a point of clarification. Do we need to get a vote to move to action, or can we just move to action? Point of clarification, I just want to make sure that I have this right.
You.
I can just move to.
You don't need to do anything to take it from conference to action.
I just want to make sure. I thought I was right, but I was making sure. Thank you. So, moving into action, I will motion this forward. Do we have a second? Okay, Superintendent.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata. Member Phillips. Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
And then student preferential.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, motion passes. And so now, I think it's you, it's you still, okay. So approve submission of credential waiver application for the California Commission of Teachers Credentialing. Floor to yours.
Good evening, Board President Rhodes, board members, and interim Superintendent Allen. We are here to present to you and ask for your approval for credential waiver applications. Ed code prohibits, I mean, excuse me, provides, an opportunity for districts to waive a portion of credential requirements in order to allow educators a little more time to complete their credential requirements. Thank you, Tiffany, I need you. In order to submit credential waiver applications for certificated employees in need, CTC, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing, requires a public notice process and board approval prior to submission of any waiver applications. That is why we're here this evening. Here are the data trends of credential waiver requests for our district over the last few years. We are continuously working with our employees to meet their credential requirements. There are applicants listed here currently working on meeting their credential requirements in order to obtain their English language authorization to provide instruction to English learners.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this topic?
Well, I have one more slide.
Oh, they sent you in the app.
Thank you. I appreciate the confidence. The waiver request this evening will allow these teachers the additional time needed in order to complete their English language authorization while they continue to work with our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Board comment. Okay, seeing that we have none, we'll move into action. Do we have a motion? So move the second, second by Member Villa, move by Member Jean. Superintendent.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata. Member Phillips. Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh. Member Villa.
Aye.
Student preferential.
Aye.
All righty, motion passes, thank you very much. Item ten point oh, actually ten point one, interim superintendent report. Superintendent Allen.
Thank you, President Rhodes. I'd like to begin by thanking the board for entrusting me to serve as the interim superintendent during this transition period. This is a new role for me, but it's my twenty-eighth year in Sac City Unified. I love this district, the families we serve, and our dedicated staff, and I take this responsibility to heart. Over the last few weeks, I've been meeting with staff to reassure them that our work continues to move forward. I've answered questions as best as I can about the transition and the process of hiring a new superintendent. In these conversations, my goal has been to keep the primary focus on students in our classrooms. We have great people in this district who are keeping us grounded to that idea. During this transition and beyond, our success depends on all of our staff doing their best work to educate students and to keep them healthy, fed, and safe when they are in our care. I would also like to take this moment to recognize someone who loves this district as much as I do and who is helping to keep that focus right now, and that is our new interim Deputy Superintendent, Mary Harden Young. Mary has once again been gracious enough to delay her retirement in service to our district, and I am incredibly grateful for you, Mary. I really don't know where we would be without you. So thank you. We've, we've just had two weeks, we are two weeks away from our first day of school. Our staff is working hard to prepare us for that day. And I'd like to acknowledge our HR team led by Chief Dr. Consey McGarn and our recruitment and retention team led by Tiffany Smith Simmons for hosting a successful hiring extravaganza event in this very room on Tuesday. The place was packed with people looking for work and looking to be part of what we are building here. And I can tell you that it was very difficult that day to find parking. It just was, and because the event was featured on every local news station that morning, it was a great success. Our school starts, when our school starts, we will begin a brand-new era of pride and tradition at our three newly renamed schools. Last June, the board approved names of Miwok Middle School, Suyu Elementary School, and Umoja International Academy. This renaming effort has, is intended to better align the names of our schools with our current values. As we prepare for the first day of school, I also want to recognize the amazing work done by our facilities team. Students at Luther Burbank will be returning this fall to a brand-new swimming pool and locker room. Students at Hiram Johnson have a new sports complex for baseball, softball, and golf. In addition to that amazing new football stadium, there is a long list of facilities upgrades and improvements district-wide, including hardcore play areas, hard court play areas, new bathrooms, new roofing and fencing, and security enhancements. So thank you to our facilities team, and actually everyone involved in facilities, we thank you. All of these facilities improvements will hopefully get our students excited to attend school every day. Last year, we reduced our chronic absenteeism by seven percent. To keep improving, we are conducting summer connection home visits this month. Our team are conducting outreach to students who have had some attendance challenges in the past. These visits are focused on building relationships, assessing needs, and helping families remove barriers to attendance. Daily attendance is critical for our students' growth socially, academically, and emotionally. Finally, I would like to close my remarks to promote a special event happening on Thursday, August thirty-first, our first day of school. The Black Parallel School Board is inviting fathers and father figures to seize the moment and take their children to the first day of school to make a memorable experience. This is an annual initiative supporting students' well-being and achievement, and our families can find out more at blackparallelschoolboard.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Superintendent Allen. Going to, oh, president report. That is me. Okay, so I'll keep mine very brief. I'm excited about going back to school on the thirty-first. My brother in the back, Black Parallel School Board, taking my kids, I'll tag you guys for sure. But then also, I want to kind of let the community know about some of the work that your board is doing to work on ourselves. And so we've been connecting with Board Coach AJ Crabhill to do some work around governance and what we want to envision for our district. And I say this publicly, because we understand the work of the board trickles down through the system, and so if we're not functioning well, we also know that it'll show up in our system. And so as we continue to do that work, we hope that as we continue to do the work, you guys do the work along with us. There's going to be opportunity at some point for us to be talking directly to community around visioning new board priorities. And so I want to let our community know that you guys are the top of our minds of how we govern and like, you know, the work that's being done as a board. Besides that, Burbank has a pool that is being opened to the community this Saturday. We have community swim with the hopes that in the future that we can hold more programs for our community broadly. Burbank is located in one of the lowest socioeconomic areas in Sacramento County in the neighborhood around, and so having access to pool and swimming lessons is important, not only for our students, but our students that are coming into our school. So we'll be opening up our campus on Saturday. There's also a basketball clinic on Saturday as well, at Burbank as well, by Rhodes Family Community Development. And we hope that you guys are able to come out and utilize the space. I also want to say, Board Member Singh, there's so much beautiful things happening through our district, but you guys have a golf course. You have golf at your site, and so as we swim at Burbank and play ball, I would love to take my clubs out of my back of my car and join you. Member Kayata, I know you golf a little bit as well, and let's play a little golf. And anybody else, have the board members play a little golf on, at the new location, or basketball, or whatever you want to do. But I want to golf, so let's golf. And with that being said, also, Gracie, thank you for being part of our board. I've seen you do powerful work in the city of Sacramento in my other capacity, and I'm looking forward to the work you do here on our board of uplifting voices and centering our young leaders of today to be the people of tomorrow that you'll see on the board. We look forward to you one day also running for office and being here in these seats as well. So with that being said, welcome back Sacramento Unified School District. Thank you, everybody, for being in the space. And now we're going to go to information sharing by board members. If you have something, hop in the queue. There has to be more, okay, cool. So we have Member Singh, Second Vice President Singh.
All right, thank you. I'll respond to your comment, I don't know how to golf, so I just want to put it out there. I have a pair of golf clubs, and I don't know what to.
We'll get to learn at the site.
Some people may think I need to go to the basketball clinic, so I just want to say that's exciting. I'm going to try to show up. I also know that Hiram Johnson's football game is next Friday. That's the first home game, so I want to try to make it to that. But I also want to say that, I just want to acknowledge the work of staff, but also the work of the fact that we have teachers, administrators, and members who are coming back to the school, coming up for this new school, school year, and we're just excited to work with you all. It has been a journey, but I am excited to acknowledge that I am taking really detailed notes. I'm not saying I haven't taken notes before, but very detailed notes. We hear you, we acknowledge you. Jason, you mentioned that no one responded to your email. I apologize if I didn't respond to your email. I take pride in getting back to folks, so keep sending those emails, I'll at least respond and acknowledge that you sent something. I'll also add that, you know, with the new school year, I did have a conversation with the parent-teacher home visit folks, and I just want to acknowledge the work that you all do. I do hear you on that, and I am acknowledging, publicly acknowledging, that I will be attending the session required so I can kind of get, you know, acclimated with the program and what I need to do to go attend. I do think that parent engagement, the engagement from support systems to ensure students stay out of trouble so that we can lower our suspension rates, lower our expulsion rates. It takes everybody to do that, so we are committed to doing that, and I know that this board is committed as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Member Kayata.
Hey, I would also like to take an opportunity to welcome Superintendent Allen and Deputy Superintendent Harden Young. Really glad that the two of you were willing to step into very difficult roles. I think we have to acknowledge it's a lot of work. I think Lisa probably in the last month has probably added five years to her life already, so, not that you look at, you look like younger than me, but. It's really appreciated, it's been a seamless transition already. I know that both of you are committed to our district and our students and our community, and I'm really looking forward to the work that we're going to do until we hire a superintendent on a permanent basis. I would like to give a shout-out, a thank you, to the Summer Matters staff. My kids both attended Summer Matters this summer. To the teachers who took time off their summers to continue working with our kids, to the other staff, and also to our community partners who run this in collaboration with the district. Thank you very much. The time between Summer Matters ending and the school year starting has already been long enough, so I'm ready for my kids to get back to school on the thirty-first. Finally, we had a couple of comments and communications about our enrollment processes, basically, and I would like to request that at some point in an upcoming board meeting that we have a presentation for the board and for our community on how our enrollment processes work, how open enrollment works. How do we assign, who goes to what class? When do we split classes, and how does CONCAP work? I'm especially interested in knowing how this impacts our Title I schools and the different areas throughout the district. This is questions that parents have every year, when these, where do my kids go? Why are they in what class? Why are we being moved after we had a class? I think it's important that we kind of get an understanding about that, and if there are improvements that we need to make as a board, we can look into that. Finally, I would like to invite everybody to a park cleanup that I am hosting in coordination with City Council member Rick Jennings, several others, Pocket Greenhaven Community Association, House Verbal, Pocket Greenhaven organizer Will Kennedy, and our Parks Commissioner in my area, Joe Flores. This will be on Saturday, August twenty-sixth at nine AM, and it is at the park by the School of Engineering and Sciences, or Turner Truth Park, also where the Pocket Greenhaven Library is. So we're really looking forward to really sprucing up the entire campus of those three different, you know, there's the park, the school, and the library. And when our kids come back to SES the following week, it's going to be a beautiful campus for them. Any questions, you can definitely let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. And Member Villa.
Taylor, you said many of the things that I was going to say. Immense gratitude to our staff, Superintendent Mary, just everyone who has stepped up over the summer, all of our community partners. I'm going to keep it very short, but I am very excited for school to start in two weeks. So have a wonderful first day, all of our staff, all of our students and families. We look forward to the year.
Okay, seeing that we have. They did that to me on purpose. Go ahead, MVP.
Just a couple of things I wanted to add. Make sure that we get as much information on Miracle University as possible, and I would love to invite them to do a presentation. I also would like to hear about the pilot program at Washington. It is a new school year, it's another year to commit to safety for our students. It's another year to commit to well-being for our students, and it's another year to welcome Lisa and Ms. Mary, and especially Gracie to our board. We're going to get our student preferential vote stuff in order, because your board is working, as President Rhodes said, we're working with AJ Crabhill. And what we are doing as a working governing board is not only determining how we work together, but how we best serve our community by hearing what you need in our district. So the focus here is on our student outcomes. The focus is on, as far as I'm concerned, and what I believe the rest of my colleagues also believe, is that we have a lot of work to do, and the work is going to be difficult. But your voice is more important than I think we have led you to believe in the past. This is your district, this is not our district. So please be on the lookout in the future. I'm hoping that we'll find our ways to connect with our community, to hear what we need. Other than that, I really want to hear those presentations. So have a good start to the next school year.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And any other board comments before we move on? One's going twice, okay. All right, now going to item eleven point one, I mean eleven point oh, consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda? Second? Okay. All in favor, we do the, yes, she's going to call roll. She's going to call roll. Taylor. Nothing.
We'll not call a roll?
We're going to call roll.
Did you call me?
No. I did say Taylor, but I was just messing with you, actually, sorry.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Now I. Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh. Member Villa.
Aye.
Okay, and thank you, guys. We're going to future board dates and locations, September seventh, we'll be here at four-thirty. And September twenty-first, we'll be here at four-thirty. I'll move to adjourn. So move second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's all, folks.